Chair, we are recording. It is four o'clock.
Good afternoon. It's February 8th, 4:00 PM. We call this meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. We have some ground rules we'd like to go through now. Welcome to this meeting. Here are the ground rules. Please turn off cell phones or at least silence your ringers. Please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you desire to speak, fill out a speaker information form and submit to the planner before the start of the meeting. This is not required for the docket applicants. Speakers must use the microphone that's over here to capture comments in the minutes. We have a speaker's clock and have time limits. Five minutes for call to public, 10 minutes for the applicants, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and then five minutes for applicant's rebuttal. About the commission, each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three are from cities, at least six from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. For special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. Appeals of special use decisions can be made to the Board of Supervisors and filed within 15 days of the commission approval. Appeal procedures can be obtained on the county website. For assistance, contact the case planner. Dockets other than special use requests result in recommendations forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. To voice disagreements with these recommendations, attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing dealing with that docket. We'll now take roll. Mr. Markowski?
Present.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Watkins?
Present.
Mr. Limbach?
Present.
Mr. Montgomery?
Present.
Mr. Saunders is absent. Ms. Welch, are you with us? We will mark her absent. Chair is present, Kim Depew, District One, and we have a quorum. At the beginning of the new year, we elect a new chair and a vice chair. At the last meeting, we voted on a chair but decided to table the election of the vice chair. Do I have a motion to remove the item from the table?
So move. Second.
Mr. Markowski, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you. Do we have any volunteers?
What?
Vice chair. Mr. Montgomery? Yes? Mr. Montgomery has volunteered. Do we have a second to that?
Sir.
We'll do a roll call vote on that issue also. Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. You are vice chair.
Very much.
I'd like to welcome a new member to the commission. Mr. Limbach on the end. Thank you, from District One.
Well, thank you very much.
Call to public. Pursuant to Arizona revised statutes 38-431-01H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have any calls to public online? Hearing none. Are there any calls to public in the room? Hearing none. We'll move forward. Does anyone have any corrections or comments to the minutes that were presented by email? Mr. Markowski? Mr. Markowski, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Let's take a roll call vote for the minutes. Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
We should ask you to abstain. Sorry. Mr. Montgomery?
Also abstained, being out of town.
Thank you. Chair says aye. The minutes are approved. And we move into the public hearing section. Item one, docket SU 22-27, 191 Potato Farm. The applicant, PGH Holdco LLC, represented by Mr. Jim Corneli, is requesting a special use modification to allow a phased addition of approximately 150,000 square feet on South Highway 191. Do we have Mr. Corneli in the audience? Am I saying your name properly?
Cornelli.
Cornelli, okay. At this time, we call for the planning director's presentation. Mr. Kirschman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant is PGH Holding. The location is 1980 South Highway 191. It's identified as parcel number 20601011J. It's approximately 42 acres. It is zoned RU4, which is one dwelling per four acres. No change proposed to the zoning. It is in growth category D, and the comprehensive plan designates it light industrial through the Mid-Sulphur Springs Valley Community Plan. The existing use is potato processing, and the same is going to be with additional capacity, as well as a few greenhouses for them to grow some of their potatoes in, as well as some, a few housing units for workers. So this is the aerial location of the site. It is a relatively new aerial photo. You can see several of the new additions on the building. If you've been on the commission for some time, you probably recall seeing this site. Probably, I think this is the third amendment. We have been working with them and actually requested that instead of having to keep coming back to the commission to kind of look at the site comprehensively and to see what their future plans entailed. And that's what's before the commission this evening. There's not plans to go out tomorrow and build 150,000 square feet, but this is their game plan for the next three to five years. Their first step is hopefully in a few weeks to start construction of one of the greenhouses on the site. So as I mentioned, it's a fairly large addition. We're looking at 10 total greenhouses, each of them roughly an acre, excuse me, each of them roughly 4,300 square feet, for a total of almost an acre. The west addition along State Route 191 will be about 10,600 square feet, four additional residential units, a complex center, office, et cetera, at 6,400 square feet, another cooler room at about 2,500 square feet, pallet racking room about 12,000 square feet, a work alley about 12,000, and then another wash line, 22,500. So here's some photographs of the existing site. You can see the buildings are, the site's kept fairly clean. We do have some conditions. There's some pallet storage and some containers that you can see in the bottom left pictures. Madam Chair, I'm going to ask for a brief pause because apparently these slides are not visible online, so give me just a moment. There was somebody online that was not able to see. Are you, okay, thank you. All right, Madam Chair, apologize. So we do have the photographs of the site. On the bottom left there, there's some conditions for the car containers and the pallet area to be cleaned up and relocated. In discussions with the applicant, they're already working on some of those items, and they didn't have any issues with our conditions. So there are 10 factors that we use to evaluate all special use proposals. As submitted, the application complies with seven of those factors, and it complies with a waiver with one factor. And this is a waiver that's been approved by the commission for the last couple additions, and that's for parking. Their site plan does not show parking, which meets our current code requirements. When you go out to the site, there is more than adequate parking out there. In discussions with them previously, as well as at this one, at this, excuse me, at this modification, they do a lot of vantils and bringing people to the site, so they do not need the amount of parking at which our code requires. And upon inspection, it definitely confirms that. Should they need additional parking, they have quite a bit of space out there in areas that they could put parking in. All the existing parking driveway areas that they do have, they all comply with the code. As far as widths, they have the minimum two-inch gravel on them, and so they do meet all other standards. So we have four factors in favor of this request. First is the project is consistent with the applicable policies, the comprehensive plan, and the purpose of the Rural Zoning District. The project complies with nine criteria used to evaluate special use requests. With the waiver, complies with one additional. The project would generate additional employment, and the special use complies with the Mid-Sulphur Springs Valley Area Plan. We have no factors identified against. With that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. I now declare the public hearing open and call for the applicant's statement. If you'd like to come up to the microphone. They state your name and address before you speak, sir?
James Cornelli. Address is 1980 North Highway 191, Cochise, Arizona, 8560606. Basically, as Robert had put out, you know, in his presentation, we are basically on the process of just trying to increase, you know, our production in the area that we're farming, which is basically mostly Cochise County. The idea behind the process that's in place is to start growing our actual potato seed from a true, what they call a tissue culture, so we're able to continue to propagate our own seed locally here in Arizona, instead of bringing it in from several other states. And that's one of the reasons for the greenhouses, is those will actually house these plants and grow what should be actually what we consider a G zero. It's, I won't go into lengthy detail, but it's about the very beginning start of an actual potato seed. It starts from a small plant, and that's the beginning of it. And we're also a part of several breeding companies across the United States and Europe that these tissues come from for introducing new varieties into the United States. So that's the whole venture behind the greenhouse. This is done all over the United States, but we're taking it in-house, just that we feel that we can do a better job locally and be able to, you know, as anything else, add a few more jobs to the area and actually, you know, increase our acreage across, you know, the Cochise area. As we said, there's one greenhouse. That's the plan for this year. It's more of a trial thing. We don't know for sure how it's going to work, but we're willing to give it a chance, and we feel very confident with the program that we have in place. You know, the idea would be to expand to 10 over a period of time, along with the other buildings and so forth that was presented. There is an opportunity for us to build the one on the west side of the complex for just a storage building, which would eliminate a lot of those trailers that are there. That's our plan behind it. That's the only two things that are on the docket for us to do this year completely. The rest of it would be ongoing. So I don't know if there's any questions behind that, or?
We'll call you back up if we have some questions, and I thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Now we call for comments from other persons, either for or against. Are there any in the room? Hearing none, I ask, are there any online? Hearing none there either. We move to the applicant's rebuttal. I'm assuming you don't need to say anything more at this time. You didn't forget anything, did you? All right. We declare the public hearing closed. This is the opportunity for commission members to discuss. You may ask questions of the applicant or staff. Anyone?
I did have two questions.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. Does he want to come back up?
For the applicant? Yes, sir. Sorry. We're going to bring you back, though.
They're short questions.
No problem.
I did read the entire packet, and pretty impressive. When it comes to employment, can you suggest a number, perhaps, of employees? As it starts out right now, for the one unit that's going to be built for this year, we're probably looking somewhere between four and five people. But over a period of time, with the program, it could be as much as 20 or 25 people. Increase, you know, for, they're over and above what we're doing right now. And then another question I was interested in is the product itself, consumption. I saw it in here somewhere. It's a domestic product, right? Yes. By that, I mean within the United States. Correct. Yes. I mean, the big, I should rephrase that. The biggest majority of it's sold within the United States. We do do some products into Canada also, just because it's a venture that we work together with, with a partner in that side. Okay. That was my concern. Okay. We're doing all this work. I didn't want to ship it somewhere else. No, no. Like I say, 95% of it stays within the United States, all the way from east coast to west coast, north and south. Very good. That answers my questions. Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
If at all, how might the water overflow affect the 191?
It shouldn't affect it any different than what's been in place for the last four years, technically. We have abided by the drainage system that we added last year, and all this water still is contained through that drainage system into the reservoir that you see on the map. And then any of the, you know, the water change of the facility hasn't changed. It's the same thing as last year. We use it. We pump it out to a retention area. Then we actually have a pivot that we water hay ground with. And then if there's overage, it'll go into the sediment pond, just if there's a breakdown or something like that with a pivot or something like that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I'm glad to see you're putting in for a long-range plan, because I know last time you were here, and I brought it up, and this is for staff, is there a way to maybe change the zoning so they aren't having to come in? But you answered that last time, and so I guess I'm just commenting, saying I'm glad to see this is more long-range.
Well, thanks to Robert. We did a lot of talking about this the last time, from the last time to this time, and it definitely made a lot more sense. And it just took a little longer for us to design it, because, you know, if we all had a perfect crystal ball, it'd be easy to predict the future. But we feel this is as close as we could come with the design of what we see our needs will be. I appreciate that.
Mr. Cornelli, I want to compliment you on how you utilize your water, your recycling, your pumping back and all that. But as you expand your source of water, the water supply, how will that be impacted as you continue to grow?
The amount of water that we're using with our expansion, the expansion would be more into a storage than actual facility, washing facility. So the water level that we're using right now, it would only extend longer over a period of time. Like right now, most of our production is washed and packed in from about March to August. It would probably just lengthen that to like December.
So you don't see any problems forecasting adequate water needs to continue operating as you expand?
No. We, you know, the well that we have in place that supplies the water to our facility, its GPM is 900 gallons. We use maybe, maybe half of that at the most when we're at full production for that period, for a small period of time.
Any other questions? Mr. Young?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think you can safely sit now. Call for the planning director's summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff does recommend a conditional approval. And so if the commission wishes to grant approval, staff would recommend the following conditions. First, the applicant shall bring all lighting into compliance of the outdoor lighting regulations within six months of this approval. So there are a few lights that are angled up instead of directed down. I've already spoken with the applicant. He will be working on those. The applicant shall maintain a minimum 20-foot setback along all property lines. That includes the car containers and pallet crate storage along the 191. And then all storage, including but not limited to the pallets, crates, and trash, shall be screened by a minimum of a six-foot-high wall fence or vegetated barrier. With that, there is a sample motion on the screen for you this evening.
Would like to call for the motion at this time?
Chairman?
Mr. Markowski?
We approve docket SU 2227, subject to the conditions as listed in the staff memorandum. Factors in favor of approval are constitute findings and facts.
Sir, a second. Second by Mr. Watkins. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Young?
Aye.
No discussion at this time, sir?
No discussion, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I think we'll move to voting then. Go ahead.
That's what I, that's what I was getting ready for. I'm sorry. Aye.
Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery? Chair votes aye. It is unanimous, sir. Go forth and make potatoes.
Make potatoes.
Moving to item number two. Docket SU 22-31, Natoma Plant Nursery. Request a special use authorization for a commercial plant nursery in an RU4 zoning district at 5715 South Natoma Trail. Applicants, the applicant is Mr. Brandon Collins. Are you in the room, sir?
Welcome.
Planning directors report, please.
Thank you. This is an application for a commercial plant nursery in an RU4 zoning district. The property is located off of Natoma Trail, which is off of Ramsey Road between Mosin and Ranch Road. The property is developed with a residence detached garage, barn, and storage shed. The proposed development would be located on the northwest portion of the property. The plant area will be 75 by 75 feet. The parking area will be 55 by 55 feet. The applicant proposed a second access off of Natoma Trail, which the right-of-way department denied. The existing access off of Natoma Trail would need to be improved to commercial standards. The applicant requests a waiver of the six-foot screening requirement. On this slide, you see the location of the proposed plant nursery in red. The location of the structures on adjoining properties are circled in yellow. Because of the four-acre size of the parcel and the location of the neighboring residences in relationship to the proposed nursery, the applicant represents that the plant nursery will not significantly affect the view shed of the neighbors, and that the waiving of this screening requirement is reasonable. The parcels surrounding the applicant's parcel are also zoned RU4. The area is within the Sierra Vista Subwatershed, and so the water conservation principles apply. The applicant received one letter of support and one letter of opposition. The letter of opposition cited concerns about the effects of the increased traffic on Natoma Trail and on the safety of horseback riders and residents walking their dogs. Here are the factors in the zoning regulations that are used to evaluate special use authorizations. The applicant complies with five of the factors. He will comply with the site development standards if the waiver of the screening requirement is granted. Two factors are inapplicable, and the application does not comply with two factors. The factors with which the application does not comply are the traffic circulation factor and the public input factor. The traffic circulation factor states that the special use authorization will not result in a residential street being used for non-residential traffic. In this case, Natoma Trail is a residential street and will be used for non-commercial, or excuse me, non-residential, excuse me, non-residential traffic. And regarding the public input factor, there is a letter of opposition to the proposed nursery. With that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
We'd like to call for the applicant's statement, please. State your name and address first, sir?
Brandon Collins, 5715 South Natoma Trail, Hereford, Arizona. Good evening. As I stated, my name is Brandon Collins. The application that we submitted stems from about two years ago. My wife made a joke saying that if she could work around plants all day, then she would be set. So once we, once I got out of the Marine Corps and came out here, we decided to kind of make it, make it a thing. So what, what we, what really kind of stemmed this decision was her comment, as well as us and our joy of being outside and gardening and planting, as well as the pandemic had a big influence on it. And so for us with this business, it's not, it's not a money-making business for us. We have both full-time jobs. It's just to provide a low-cost alternative for people in the community to be able to garden and have plants. And not everyone has the best green thumbs. They don't like to grow from seeds. So we've got a lot of really good public support on social media. We did have the one opposition letter, and for the traffic consideration, it was one thing that we had talked about with people in the community. The traffic, the opposition to traffic, the business is only going to be open on weekends. As I said, my wife and I both have full-time jobs. We're not going to be operating throughout the week. Traffic should be very, I guess, non-impactful to the residents in the area. We are the first house on the left, technically the second house on the road coming from Ramsey, which is where we are predicting 90% of our traffic to be coming from. We don't see it really causing an impact to the area. For the comment about foot traffic, horse traffic, we have maybe seen two people in the last six months actually walking down our road. Not to say that doesn't happen, but we don't see that also being impactful to the residents in the area. For water conservation, it's going to be a big point that people have brought up, and we do understand that, and we do want to limit environmental impacts as much as possible. We plan for rainwater harvesting. We plan for bottom watering the plants. No water will be wasted that we can control. Another issue that was brought up by one of our neighbors as well, was to personally to us, was light impact to the area. Again, we're not going to be open at night, so we're not going to have any exterior lighting that's going to be visible. I think that is it.
Thank you. Now we'd like to call for comments from other persons, either pro or con. Is there anyone in the room? Hearing none. Is there anyone online? Mr. Collins, you waive your rebuttal to all that commentary. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Like to call for commission discussion. You may ask questions of either staff or the applicant. Anyone?
I have no questions.
Mr. Young, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Actually, I did have one, if you wouldn't mind coming back. I could have kept you here. I was a little unclear. I was a little unclear, are you planting on-site or bringing in seedlings?
Neither, actually. So, we're going to be growing everything from seed on the property itself. We don't want to worry about importing, exporting plants. We think that they're best suited grown in the area that they're going to be planted in. So, all of our plants will be grown on-site in the plant area that was proposed on the diagram.
In containers? Is that correct, or in the ground?
In containers.
Okay. And do you have any plans to put up a sign?
Not at this time. We're looking, possibly in the future, it would be on our property though, not anything exterior to the property or in the usement.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, appreciate that. Any further questions? Right. Hearing none, let's call for the Planning Director's summary, please.
Regarding docket SU 2231, staff recommends conditional improvement with the following conditions. One, additional access points on to Natoma Trail are prohibited. Two, the applicant shall install and use a drip irrigation system for plant irrigation that will be designed, installed, maintained, and operated in a manner that will promote water conservation. The drip irrigation system must include sensors or other technology designed to suspend or interrupt the operation of the irrigation system during periods of rainfall. Plants will be bottom-watered. The applicant shall install a rainwater harvesting tank with a minimum capacity of 500 gallons. The collected rainwater shall be used to irrigate non-consumable plants as a means of offsetting the use of potable water. There shall be no outdoor lighting with the parking and display area except during permitted hours of operation. And hours of operation may not exceed 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. Sample motion, should you elect to approve.
Thank you, I'd like to call for the motion.
Madam Chair, excuse me, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention the waiver, the screening requirement as a condition shall be waived.
Thank you. Mr. Watkins?
Madam Chair, I move to approve docket SU 22-31 with the conditions of approval recommended by staff, the factors of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Mr. Gonzalez seconds the motion. Do we have any further questions or discussion before we vote? Hearing none? Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Is aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. We're moving to docket SU 22-33, RV Park Expansion. This is a special use modification to allow a phased expansion of an existing six-space recreational vehicle park. Applicant is Rebecca Basset on Doe Ranch Road. Are you present, Ms. Basset? Hello, thank you. We'd call for the Planning Director's presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The parcel size is 20.05 acres. Current zoning is RU4, one dwelling per four acres. No changes are proposed to the zoning. It is in growth category D. The comprehensive plan designation is rural, there is no area plan. There are six equestrian-based RV spaces on the site, along with a single-family home and other equestrian amenities. The proposed expansion is for six additional RV spaces for a total of 12, about a 3,000-square-foot communal building and about 6,000 square feet in shade structures for the animals. Parcel is located 3651 East Doe Ranch Road and is identified as parcel number 11401097A. Parcel is zoned RU4, as is everything in the vicinity of that parcel. This is the concept plan that has been provided, it was included in the packets for the Commission. It's a little hard to see on the screen. But the rear, or excuse me, the the upper-left portion of the screen, that is where the RV park area is concentrated. There are six additional spaces over there. The applicant plans on doing this in phases and adding six RV spaces next. These will be dry, they won't have any hookups at this time. And then once those start filling up and things start changing, then other amenities will be added to the site, including electric, septic, water, et cetera. There are 10 factors used to evaluate all special use proposals. As submitted, the application complies with two. It complies with three, with conditions with three additional factors. Partially complies with two, does not comply with one, and there are two not applicable. Because there is a lot of public interest on this one and a lot of questions from the Commission, I have modified the PowerPoint from what was in your packet to go into more detail of each of these factors for the benefit of not only the Commission but the public. So, compliance with duly-adopted plans. After staff evaluated this request, we determined that it partially complies. Again, it's located in a rural area. It is designated category G, which is a rural growth area. Complan states that we should support preservation and expansion of Cochise County's tourism, technology, agriculture, et cetera. But it also says we should provide for continuation of traditional rural ways of life, such as farming, ranching, other air-related activities, and provide for diverse and viable economic and development opportunities. So, staff did have a little bit of concern because, and in some of the pictures and the stuff that you might see, there may not be the rural lifestyle that some people would expect when you look out and you see a large clustering of RVs. So, staff had a little bit of difficulty being able to determine, to be able to find that this was fully compatible with that statement. And then with property rights considered, protect the rural character from the intrusion of urban uses and recognize that resources such as agricultural lands, open space, scenic view sheds, provide economic, social, and environmental benefits. Compliance with zoning district purpose statement, this one also partially complies. And so, the overarching goal is to preserve the character of areas designated as rural in Cochise County. Encourage those types of non-residential, non-agricultural activities which serve a local need or provide a service and are compatible with rural living. To provide space for people, minimize traffic congestion, and preserve the existing rural environment of unincorporated areas of the county situated outside existing communities. And then to provide recreational support services that are compatible with rural living. And so, the photograph on the bottom there is a recent photograph. I believe there are four RVs within the existing approved area. And that is the view from one of the nearby neighbors. And we do have some conditions to address some of that, which we'll discuss in a little bit. Traffic circulation complies with conditions. So, if this were to be developed with, per the zoning, you could do a maximum of five single-family homes on the property. If they were to build five single-family homes, the traffic would essentially be almost the same as far as numbers go. But you may end up actually with people coming and going a little bit more frequently or even infrequently, depending on how many people are located or staying in the RV park at that time. We also have the issue of special events. The applicant has held, I believe, a wedding as well as another special event there, where approximately 100 or so people were in attendance. And as the Commission saw in the comments, there's lots of concerns raised about, you know, parking on Doe Ranch Road, where they park in on-site. You know, staff has been working with the applicant, the applicant has revised their site plan, showing, you know, where they can have parking for these special events on-site. We've had some discussions about, you know, if the docket should be approved, about doing some improvements to signage to show people, you know, the right way to get to the site, where to park, so that they're not impacting the roadway. We do have a couple of conditions of approval. And so, we are recommending limiting a maximum of four special events per year. Two-day events, no more than a two-day event. This includes craft fairs, art festivals, weddings, et cetera. And we are recommending that the attendance is capped at 100. This is not in our zoning regulations. It would be fairly hard for us to enforce this. But we do feel that this is one way, this is one way that we have tried to mitigate some of the concerns of the neighbors, trying to reduce the impacts of the traffic to those neighbors. Along with those special events, they will be required to submit a special event permit to the county. So, each event would be reviewed by us per our regulations to make sure that adequate provisions are being provided. Number two has already been taken care of, the applicant has updated the site plan to show where parking would be held for the special events. And then we have a standard condition, which is a private maintenance agreement. Both Doe Ranch Road and Bull Run are private dirt roads. And so, they will be required to sign a form which states the county does not maintain the road. We do not guarantee access to their property. And they are responsible for participating in the maintenance of that road. Adequate services and infrastructure, it does comply. They have an existing well, septic, and electric on-site. Initially, the new spaces will be dry. Prior to them hooking up water, they will have to do septic system. And they will work with the Health Department to get those permits. Significant site development standards, it does comply with conditions. So, the site plan, we do have, again, the condition of approval for the show-in-the-parking event line, which they have done. They'll also, with each special use, have to provide a site plan. And so, they'll show, you know, where tents would be set up, things of that nature at that time. Required setbacks are 20. Per the zoning regulations, the applicant is proposing 30. Maximum height is 30, or structures, eight foot for a wall or fence. The communal building is still conceptual, they have not landed on a height. I don't believe it would be anywhere near that height, but they will have to submit and comply at that time with our requirements. Lighting shall comply with the outdoor lighting regulations. And then our landscaping and screening, there is none required, but we do have a condition of approval recommending both screening and landscaping along the west property line. And I've added an exhibit that was not included initially in your packet. Hopefully, this will help clear up some confusion. So, the blue line is representing what is ultimately required. That is where landscaping and a screen, wall, fence, et cetera, will be required to be constructed. And that will be by the time they call for a final inspection of the communal building. The, I apologize, I'm colorblind, I think it's green, maybe it's red. Along that blue line, that is along the RV park. And that is the area that will be required prior to a final inspection of those six new spaces that are dry. And that is to help screen the adjoining neighbor from having to look at not only the existing RV park, but also the increase in the RVs being placed back there. And then just for reference, while I have this signed up, the yellow area is the six new RV spaces. The black line on the left-hand side there, that is the proposed location of the corrals. And then up at the top towards the middle, that circle represents the future communal building. Public input, it does not comply. And this is approximate, because we did get some letters in after the packet. And there are multiple folks that own multiple parcels in the area. But we did get nine letters in opposition, and they represent, I believe, a total of 15 parcels. I believe they are all now reflected on the map as shown up there. We did get two letters in support. One was definitely supporting, the other was more of an offer of purchasing the property, but it was not in opposition. I did just want to read a section from our zoning regulations under the public input criteria, because I did have some questions from some of the Commissioners as well as the general public. And so, under public input, it states, "If there is major public opposition to a proposed special use authorization request, this may indicate that technical evaluation regarding the compatibility of the use does not concur with the view of the local residents. And a recommendation of denial may be appropriate. If public concerns have been raised, it's fair to ask if the applicant has made reasonable effort to address these concerns through the citizen review process." If there is major public support, and I don't need to go on, if there's major public support factor in favor. The applicant did complete their public or their citizen outreach. They reached out to the neighbors, same folks that got the notice. And they did have some discussions as far as what was proposed. The applicant is the one that was proposing some of that screening along the existing RV park to try to help with some of the neighbor concerns. So, I have that one. So, just some photographs, these are some photographs of some of the events that have been held up there on the site that were on the website. These are some photographs of the site, it's kept very clean. You know, when I was out there, there was no trash, debris, anything like that. There were some piles and stuff in the back that would be normally associated with a rural property. They do have amenities on-site, including a barbecue, little kitchen area, and of course, the corrals for horses. So, we have five factors in favor of approving the request. So, with the recommended condition of approval, the proposed use would fully comply with five of the eight applicable factors used by staff to analyze the request. The project will provide diversity of business discussed within the comprehensive plan by providing support of entrepreneurship of a different type of business Cochise County. The entrepreneurship is essential and should be encouraged as part of economy-based land use policy, supporting small businesses. And comprehensive plan also states supporting preservation of Cochise County's tourism. We received two letters of support. And then we do have five factors in, against approving the request. And though the county does not enforce CCNRs, Section 1.03 specifically states that any commercial venture which requires special use permit, variance, or change in the RU4 zoning will not be permitted. Again, the county does not enforce CCNRs, but those were provided to us by one of the residents. Comprehensive plan states, "With property rights considered, protect rural character from the intrusion of urban uses and recognize that resources such as agricultural lands, open space, and scenic view sheds provide economic, social, and environmental benefits." Seven letters in opposition, I apologize, I did not update this with the other slide. I believe that was nine letters we had, representing 15 properties now. The project does not comply with one factor, which was the public input, and partially complies with two others. And the zoning would allow for a maximum of five single-family residences. And this application is to add an additional six RV spaces, so that'd be 12 RV spaces plus the existing residents on the site. With that, I will pause my presentation there. I do know the applicant has been sending some emails back and forth, trying to make some compromises and stuff. So, I will let her go through that. But there may be some changes that she has based on emails this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. The public hearing is now declared open, and we call for the applicant's statement.
Hello, good evening, my name is Becky Basset. And the address of our expansion project is 3651 East Doe Ranch Road in Pierce, Arizona. We've been running the Equine Campground for a couple of years now. We do have the existing six sites. And we've gotten so many people that love to come here, and we're constantly turning business away because we don't have the space to accommodate it. And that's the primary reason for the expansion. We want to be able to provide more space for more people to be able to come and enjoy riding in the mountains in the area. So, we get a lot of horse people coming through. We did a couple of events last year. My first time doing events, really. So, I've learned a lot. There were, there was one issue with parking. I could have had a better sign out because folks were parking along the road, and I didn't realize they were doing that until it was a little late. But going forward, we have the ability to be able to route the traffic around the south entrance of the property so that they're not on the road. It was never our intention to have vehicles where they didn't belong. And then, for the campground, I think the most important part is to be able to have the space for additional people to come. And the horse shelter, you know, they need a little bit of break from the wind and the cold. And a community building where people can be able to gather. building where people can be able to gather. What we have right now is not sufficient for a dozen people. We only have a small library building. Only five people can get in there right now. So that's kind of the project in a nutshell. We're going to phase everything in and do it gradually as we're able to. There was a couple of things that I really didn't care for with the, I guess, conditional approval. There's things on there that I didn't ask for, and things on there that I don't want, period. So I don't know how we want to address those things, but you're welcome to ask me any questions that you have, and I'll address them the best that I can.
That it for now?
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll be calling you back.
Okay.
At this time, we have three public comment sheets. Let's hear from Mr. Patrick Gleason Moore, please.
And Madam Chair, if I may. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on an item this evening, you need to fill out a speaker request card back there, and then please bring them up to me.
Hi.
Name and address, sir?
My name is Patrick Gleason Moore. The address is 3661 East Antelope Road, Pierce, Arizona, H-5625. And the main thing I wanted to comment on was the CCNRs. I know, I don't expect the county to enforce the CCNRs because our, the homeowners association is completely defunct, but I believe that the CCNRs are still binding. So I think that's something you should keep or take into consideration. And that's pretty much about it. I just hope that neighbors can all get along, so.
Thank you. We have Sean Campbell.
Hi, I'm Sean Campbell. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We live on 11878 South Elkhorn Road. Basically, it's the crossroads of East Doe Ranch and South Elkhorn. But we also do own three additional properties that are in the same area of where Lazy Horse Ranch resides. Our main concern is the impact of additional traffic, additional people, and the liability that those occurrences may cause us in the future. Accidents happen, people do things they shouldn't do. How is that going to be addressed? We shouldn't have to buy additional insurance coverages to cover guests from over there. You know, I'm just concerned about stuff like that. Also, we live in a rural area. We moved from Phoenix to live in the country, and now we're having this very large commercial establishment pretty much just, excuse me, pretty much just down the road from us. We were fine with the small business because we're small businesses ourselves, and we understand that. But this is now going past the scope of a small business, and it really doesn't belong in the area of where we live.
That it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Glenn Renell.
Our address is 11950 South Elkhorn, and my wife, Gail, and I own the property that directly abuts the special use area. We've lived there for 21 years, and we oppose the approval of this special use modification for the reason we stated in our public comments. In hindsight, knowing what we know now, we never would have supported the original special use permit. We fail to recognize how much we were giving away. We believe the assurances that this would remain a small, niche venue, more of a hobby than a business, have since dissipated. Now, we almost five years' experience dealing with the results of our naivete. Our scenic views towards the Chiricahua's have been replaced by horse trailers, sheds, and chicken coop, things that we can't help but notice every time we look in that direction. There is much more traffic with increased road dust. The addition of a wedding venue and craft fair along with horse and dog clinics will greatly increase the intensity of use and the impact to the neighborhood. We're also concerned about the negative impact on our property values. You know, coming to look at the property, and this is what you see is the trailer park. Deer Haven Ranches have CCNRs, which remain in effect if owners and buyers are not made aware of them. Without a board, we are left taking action as individuals, which may involve hiring lawyers to enforce the CCNRs. The time has come with recent land sales and the influx of buyers who claim ignorance of CCNRs, so that we're there. If this modification is to be approved, the most important recommendation to us are the solid wall along the eastern property line, that's our eastern property line, limits on special events, voiding the permit with transfer of ownership. We fear as this goes along, it just could become a trailer park. Limitations on length of stay. And as the closest neighbor with the most visual impact, we would ask that the 3,000 square foot communal building, which in my mind, I think is that's a 50 by 60 square foot building, will be set back from the property line by at least 150 feet. The original application states, "The park specializes in the needs of equestrian travelers." We would request that this modification stipulates the restriction to equestrian travelers only as temporary living orders for recreational or vacation purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no other forms. Does anyone else wish to speak on this that failed to turn their form? Anyone online?
I believe you have Ms. Kitco online. Is there anybody else online that would like to speak?
Thank you. Hearing none. Is it time for the applicant's rebuttal if you'd like to address any of these issues?
Okay, so there was a whole lot of issues. I don't know if I can remember them all, but hopefully you'll help me. We have no problem putting up a screening wall. We have no problem with planning the landscaping that Gail and Glenn are asking for to the west boundary. We don't have any problem keeping traffic and dust down to a minimum, the best as we possibly can. On the special use conditional approval, there's a request for multiple two-day events. I didn't ask for that, not trying to do that, and it was never something I was ever trying to do. We've only had one wedding, and I don't honestly know if we're going to do anymore. If we do, we would only do a few. It would be a one-day event only.
Can you hear me?
Ms. Bassett, give us a moment. Robert?
Sir, we are in the middle of a public hearing. Can you please mute yourself?
Yes, I was online from the beginning. Robert Gendler, we're in opposition. I went to the wrong office in Bisbee, and I didn't have enough time to get back to, or I went to Benson instead. I made a mistake.
Okay, the applicant right now is doing her rebuttal. Please mute yourself, and we will see if the chair wants to reopen and give you the opportunity to speak after she's completed.
Yeah, I was online, but you wouldn't, nobody heard me.
Great, sir, stand by. Ms. Bassett, can you remember where you left off?
Nope. I think I was, what was I talking about? Weddings, yep. Yeah, so one-day events and not multiple two-day events. We had one cowboy Christmas event. It was geared for equine products, equine stuff, equine people. It was 80% of the vendors that were there were horse-related stuff of some sort, selling gifts for Christmas. And I asked the community what we could bring to the table as far as what they'd like to see as a horse ranch in the community, what could we provide? And that was one of the things that came up. There was a horsewoman who was making things out of horse shoes, and she asked for a place to have an event where vendors could come and set up and sell for Christmas in a ranch-horse environment. And, and I agreed to it. I said, "Yes, I think that's a great idea, and if it helps other local small businesses, that's all I'm for. It's not a money-making event for us." And that was the one event where we had trouble getting traffic routed around to the backside of the property so that they weren't out on the road. Do I need to have an event like that? Uh-uh, nope. I, I would be perfectly happy just having the campground and doing horse things. We're an equine commercial facility, and that's what we want to do. If there's a need in the community to provide a ranch atmosphere for a western wedding to cater to folks that want to get married on horseback, that's me, I'm that person. That's how I want to help people. Is it something that I'm going to have monthly? Goodness, Lord, no, not with the amount of work it took us to do the one that we did, and it's just me and Jason doing it. So unless we get a whole bunch of staff, I don't see us doing a whole lot of these weddings. And I think people are overly concerned that we're going to do all this stuff and wreck the neighborhood, and it's going to be a mess, and, and that's not at all what we're trying to do. I know, I, I think I saw something about light pollution. We are not proposing lights. We don't have any lights right now, and I don't want any lights. If somebody wants a light, they can turn on a flashlight, they're camping. I have a dusted dawn that'll come on if somebody walks by, but, you know, it's, it's not meant to be a nuisance, and we're going to keep it so that it's not as much as we possibly can with the, except for the, you know, the visual. But what are some of the other things that were brought up? Because now I'm thinking about it. Is there anything else that I can address about the traffic? I, I guess the one thing that I do need to address is, is the transfer of ownership with the RV sites. If I build a business and I'm able to serve the county by clearing out the trails for the forestry service and, and having things like a horse clinic occasionally for the community to enjoy, and then all the, all of a sudden, one day, it stops when I, when I am done, when I'm ready to retire, when I can't operate the ranch anymore, that all of a sudden, one day, all my hard work, all my blood, sweat, and tears could have come to a stop. That I can't handle. I can't live with that idea. And I'm going to sit here and tell everybody in this room, "I'm pouring my life into this, and it's what I love to do." Maybe it's too much for this area. I don't know.
Thank you, Ms. Bassett. I'm sure we'll have to ask you to come up again and answer commission questions. At this time, we'd like to try opening the public hearing one more time on this docket and give the gentleman online at least three minutes to speak, Robert. Is that all right?
Mr. Gendler, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you, your time is starting. Go ahead.
Okay. I've been next-door neighbors to that property for over 15 years, and we have a lawsuit going on right now of $250,000. The people from Supplee scam these new owners into a, a, a license that may not even be proper. Secondly, it would be adversely affecting our lawsuit if you rule in the favor of these people here, because we have no chance to, to ask any questions about what you did to get the, the original license. Secondly, it'll destroy this whole neighborhood here, that's houses that came for privacy. I feel sorry for the people in the first part of the Doe Ranch Road because the dust is ridiculous. They'll live in dirt. Their cars will be covered, their houses will be covered. It'll be bad for their health, and it'll, I spent $4,000 on improving the road back from this property all the way back to, to the other property and also participating in the beginning to make that road, but it's a dirt, it's a gravel road, and it's terrible. And if you speed, the dust goes everywhere. We're at the end of the road, so it's not as bad, but we find garbage everywhere. We, we put in the original, that Buck Road there was put in there by the Supplee so they could have RV vehicles coming in at 2:00, 3:00, and 4:00 o'clock in the morning. We turned them in for human trafficking. That's the reason for that road, and I never even got a sign in the front to be able to hear the first hearing, even though you had our addresses to send us, you know, the information about the first hearing. So it's involved in a $250,000 lawsuit. You people, the zoning department was already got out of it because of, we filed too late, but some of your people are going to be our witnesses in the lawsuit. So whatever's decided, I think that it should be continued until after this lawsuit, number one. Secondly, it'll destroy our area. There will be no more privacy. That's my position. Thank you very much, and also Yorke Ramirez's position. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Ms. Bassett, do you want to respond in a public hearing, or do you want to wait until we have questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We declare the public hearing closed at this moment. This is a time for commission discussion. Do you have questions for staff or the applicant?
I do have a question for staff.
Mr. Montgomery.
Okay, staff. In many of these documents are a number of legal pages from Superior Court, some including Judge Cardinal. But would you help to clarify what's going on? And how does that affect Cochise County? What is our responsibility to the county regarding?
So there is no current legal action against the county?
Good. Even though you're listed, right, gentlemen?
Correct.
So we can just disregard all of that?
I'll default that to our attorney, but yes.
And so?
Yeah. It's something.
Okay. Paul, can you push your microphone on?
There's, there's no.
All right, then. And that will be struck. My other questions, Madam Chair, were for the applicant, so.
Ms. Bassett, would you mind coming back? We do have questions for you.
Hi.
Hi.
I had just a couple of things. If I have to agree with you completely on one item, if this were to proceed, that your investment should be protected.
Thank you, sir.
I can't agree with. I can't agree with losing that, all that time. That, I don't know where it's going to go, but if it goes there, that should be protected. Okay? I'll say to some of the other opponents, I have been an opponent, but expansion is forever. Wherever you go to live, maybe the first person there, but you won't end up the first person there. And it's just the evolutionary process, I think, of civilization. People do move in, you do the best you can. You try to balance those needs and concerns the best we can here. So can't we all just get along kind of thing, you know, with neighbors? Especially with neighbors. So with that in mind, expansion's going to happen. But parking is an issue, or at least some of the complaints in these many pages here. And you did mention that just a minute ago.
I did. Yes, I did. Robert, do you have that other map handy? Can you pull it up? Please, thank you. Okay, so if you can, actually, this isn't the right map, but that's okay. We can go off of it.
As far as the actual parking locations, I'm not so concerned. What I am concerned about is parking on other people's property, or their easements, or messing up their property.
Oh, okay. So we had signage coming all the way down Doe Ranch Road, and it was supposed to be pointing in the direction of Bull Run Road. They were going to come in the south entrance down here and park in the back. That's where we wanted everybody. But it was an epic fail that day on my behalf, and I did not have somebody at the front of the driveway where I needed them to be directing traffic. And that is literally on me. I'm 100% responsible. My hair was on fire that day, and I literally didn't get it done correctly in time. And I did have a volunteer that was helping me park cars in the middle for the vendors, but I needed to get them toward the end of the road, and it just didn't work. So for future reference, anything that we do have will be better marked with a sign that says, parking at south entrance, and arrows. And I'll have somebody out at the front end of the driveway so that that doesn't happen again. It was never supposed to happen. It was never my intention to have people parking out on the road.
Okay, so you can deal with that in the future?
Oh, absolutely. It's an easy fix.
And are committed to do so.
Absolutely, 100%.
As far as that goes, I mean, those would be my concerns. As far as traffic and dust, well, Cochise County has a lot of dust. I have a lot of dust at my house. I live on a dirt road, too. And it can't be avoided. In the summer, there are dry seasons that are very dry. A motorcycle will kick up tons of dust. Try to get control of that. You don't want to offend the neighbors and make it unbearable. But if you put in the efforts you're talking about, I think it'd be manageable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Those are my questions, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, Ms. Bassett. I appreciate your efforts to contribute to the local economy.
Thank you.
With your neighbors, the luxury of space, privacy, in this part of the world is changing rapidly. It's an influx of people, and it will continue to do. We will evolve somehow. So we're just going to have to learn to get along with our neighbors. It's compromise and everything else. But there's a lot more people moving in with different ideas and all that. They don't like dust. They don't like dogs barking. They don't like this and that. It's part of our culture, our heritage in Cochise County.
Sure.
So I appreciate what you're doing and your contributions. It's always going to be there. You know, you're not a piece of gold nugget to be loved and cherished by everybody and your efforts. So differences of opinion are normal, and we're going to have them. We'll do our best to, our job is to do what's best for the county and try to forecast how we're going to evolve that. So these are normal issues. I don't think they're as big, but everybody who's here for space and views and the heritage and all that, but that's changing, too, and we're going to have to deal with that somehow. Thank you for watching.
Thank you. I appreciate all of your feedback. It means a lot to me. There's a lot of people that come into the campground, and they love this area so much that they stay and they buy property. To date, I've been there for two years, and I know a dozen families that have purchased and stayed in Cochise County. Some of them are standing at the back of this room. And it's a beautiful spot. We love it as much as everyone else does. We're not here to terrorize people or create discomfort or conflict.
Thank you, Ms. Bassett. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have any further questions? Stand by. Mr. Limbaugh?
Your website suggests that you're, it looks as though you're pretty active with some of the things that you're explaining on paper that you may be wanting to come back, cut back on, such as the weddings. But the website talks about the wedding, quinceañeras, and other special events. So if you don't have, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you don't have, if you're worried about not having staff for all of these things, why are they?
Exactly. You have a very good point. I put it on the website. My intention was to actually do some of those things, and I think I count on a much smaller scale. But if we don't get help, like regular help, as far as like doing a wedding, when you have that many people coming in, just say it's a group of 100 or something like that, it takes a lot of preparation work to put something like that together. And, you know, we need just more than two people. We probably need four or five people. But it's really hard to find help in that area. It really is. So without labor help, putting something like that together, I just can't physically do it myself. I would love to, but I have to have the support to do it. And I don't see us doing a whole lot of weddings. I just don't. I think it's an extra service that we can offer to people specifically that want to have a western-style wedding, you know, on a ranch in horse country in the southwest. It's not going to be something that's just, you know, any kind of wedding theme, or just have a wedding out in the country, because it's fun to have a wedding in the country, you know? We're really, really trying to cater just to the equine people and the horsemen, or somebody that wants to have a western wedding, if that makes sense. Quinceañeras, we could do that, too. A lot of girls, when they have their birthday party, they want to celebrate with a horse. If that's the kind of quinceañera party that they want to have, if it doesn't drive me crazy, you know, I'll entertain doing something like that. But we're not advertising for it. It's not something that we do, and it's not something that I'm marketing heavily to try and do those things. It's just to fill a need within the community. I know for a fact that there is definitely a need for a western wedding venue.
Technically, if it's on your website, you're advertising.
Well, I should, okay, rephrase that. I could, I'm not actively doing paid advertising or marketing for it, is what I meant. And that website is very changeable.
Anything else, Mr. Limbaugh?
No, thank you.
Mr. Young, do you have any questions?
I have a few.
Go ahead, sir.
Ms. Bassett, did I understand you bought the property two years ago?
Almost, yes. It's close.
Were those quinceañeras, were you aware of those quinceañeras when you purchased the property?
No, I was not.
Okay. You talked about the screening, screening of the wall. Is that a brick wall? Or is that, what kind of wall are you talking about?
Would be a metal wall.
Metal wall, okay.
Metal wall, six foot high.
Okay. Nice question. The picture I'm seeing on the application that was on screen, sorry I'm not present, but that picture, is that every day, or is that at one of your events? During one of your events?
I'm not sure which picture you're referring to.
Maybe Robert can pick that up?
It's the one from just the other day, when there was, I think, four or five RVs on site. And I can state that that is not an everyday event. When I was out there about three weeks earlier, four weeks earlier, there was actually only one on site. But I'll work on pulling those pictures up right now.
We're talking about the booking rate of the campground?
We're just talking about the site that your neighbors are seeing on a daily basis.
One of those photos was zoomed. That's a zoomed photo. It's not that close. I have photos going the opposite direction. It's further away.
But that's, that's the photo towards the chair cows that your neighbors are looking through, right?
Yes, that's correct. And there's four trailers there.
Okay. My final question, you know, you were talking about your Cowboy Christmas event, or whatever it was called. How many vendors are you talking, that you had during this bizarre?
I had 22 or 23 vendors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Chairman?
Mr. Montgomery.
I did have one follow-up question.
Please.
Okay. It's back to traffic, ma'am. Just wanted to follow through on that. I would hope, if I was a neighbor there, or if I was doing things there, you could police the traffic pretty severely to keep it down. Not everybody has respect for everybody else, and some people blast through roads all the time. And that would be unpleasant. I have it at where I live, you know? But if there were a way, that you could manage the traffic in a much better way, that would not be offensive to the area, I think that'd be terrific.
I do have some ideas on that.
Okay. You want to mention a few?
We could put speed bumps on the road.
Speed bumps?
That's easy. We maintain the road. We have the tractor. We can put dirt there. If they hit their head off the ceiling, they'll slow down.
Gates, perhaps?
Maybe. We could put in gates.
Okay. Well, I would just personally ask you to police the traffic to some manageable way.
Yeah, I can get a police officer. He'll police the traffic.
Don't have to listen to me.
Oh, yeah. No, seriously, I agree. People shouldn't be speeding.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you, Ms. Bassett. Anything else? Not written. Okay. I'd like to call for the planning director's summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I am gonna, we have a conditional approval, and I'm going to go through each of these conditions. And if there's any discussions, and I'm probably going to have some of my own discussion on them, just because there's been some questions about them. So the first is that the applicant shall be limited to no more than 12 individual sites. Only one recreational vehicle is permitted at each site. No detached accessory structures are permitted on any of the RV parking pads, or in the accompanying side yards. Firewise plan, emergency response plan may be required by the department. They do have one firepit does not, they have not had multiple campfires out there. The area is fairly clear, so they might be okay. We'll have that discussion, just to make sure they're not planning on expanding that. The property owner has responsibility for maintaining the parcel in a clean and orderly state, free of uncontrolled garbage. So this is the one that we have discussed quite a bit tonight. And so staff recommended a condition. At special events, shall be limited to no more than four two-day events in any calendar year. These include craft fairs, art festivals, revivals, weddings, and similar events. Attendance is limited to no more than 100 people. Events that are directly tied to the commercial stables, such as horse clinics, are not included in this. A temporary special event permit is required to be submitted to and approved by the county pursuant to section 1720.03. So staff added this condition based on concern expressed by the neighbors, based on having two events already taking place on the site, not knowing how many events are going to take place in the future. And this is, this is kind of where staff kind of landed on a, trying to be compromising between the property rights of the neighbors, as well as the property rights of the applicant that wants to expand. And we felt by limiting it to 100 people and no more than four events, we would be limiting the impacts to the neighbors and still allowing the applicant to conduct their events. The applicant has expressed in conversations with me that that 100 people is probably not acceptable, especially when it comes to doing an event like the Cowboy Christmas. By limiting it to that few of people, she's indicated that the event won't be successful, that she just won't be able to do it. So we have had those discussions, but staff still has that condition in there. I should also add that the site does have a permit for a commercial riding stable, horse riding, trail riding. Those are permitted uses within our RU4 zoning districts. They are not discretionary. They don't come before the planning commission. Use, apply for a non-residential permit, and as long as you meet the requirements in our code, it is approved. And so along with those activities tied to that horse, the equine business there, they are allowed, they are exempt from the special use. So she holds a horse clinic, or, you know, vet clinic for the horses, things that are tied directly to the equine business. They do not count towards those businesses. The site plan submitted for the special use will show where attendees will park. And she did. And I don't know if the commission saw, but I briefly did put up her revised site plan. And she does show along her driveway that she has adequate parking. I did some rough scaling when the site plan came in. There's room for approximately 100 cars just single-parked along her driveway if they were to nose in. So there is adequate parking on site for these special events, should the commission approve this item. The park shall establish quiet hours from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. The applicant shall sign private maintenance agreement for both Doe Run and Bull Run. We have already talked about the screening and the landscaping, and the conditions are for the phasing of those requirements, so that with the first six dry spaces that go in, the landscaping in the wall will be required along the area where the existing RV park is. The owner shall follow best management practices for odor and pest control at all times. She shall not allow horse minor to accumulate on the site. All onsite riding areas shall be adequately maintained, prevent creation nuisance dust during training riding activities, periodic watering, or other methods of these areas is required as dust control. The approval of the special use and the conditions that come with it will be void with transfer of ownership. So they're having some discussions with individual planning commissioners, as well as the applicant on this condition. The applicant has expressed great concern about this. One of the reasons that staff did include this, as we're aware, this was a already-approved RV park. Had this condition been imposed on that park, then the new owner would not have been able to just come in and start doing this and then adding events previously. Events weren't being hailed, at least not to the scale that they are now. So they kind of changed what was happening on site. And so if the special use were to cease once the property is sold, the new owners would then have to come back through with a new special use. The special use would probably have more factors in favor, as it is already existing there, you know, so there's, it's already a historical pattern of development set there. But this way, it would automatically trigger a new special use, just to make sure they're not planning on changing anything from what the current developer has. It's not an automatic no, but they would have to go back through this process, have the public with input, and then have the planning commission ultimately approve or not approve their new request. Now, staff also understands the applicant's concern about putting the investment into the property and then not being able to get that back should be sold. So that is probably a discussion that the commission may want to have this evening. And then the final condition is that all outside agency comments, including floodplains, which requires drainage analysis for this project, are included as conditions. With that, that concludes my presentation, and there is a sample motion for you this evening.
A call for the motion at this time? Mr. Martsky?
I vote that we approve docket SU 2233. With the conditions of approval recommended by staff, factors of approval constitute the findings in fact.
Second, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you. I'd like to call for further discussion, as suggested by Mr. Kirschman. Who would like to go first?
I will.
Mr. Montgomery.
Of the many cases we've reviewed here since I've been around, there are some there are some, there's some opposition. There seems to be a bit more tonight on this one, but it is not, well, it's been more impassioned before. I would just ask that with approval of this program's project, that the neighbors might consider an opportunity for themselves here, too, if you could work together on this stuff and not offend each other. And I am worried about noise and lighting and traffic and dogs and all of that stuff in a very rural area. So if you could accommodate those concerns, it would go a long way. Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Mr. Gonzalez.
You know, it seems like to me that we're talking about an equine service center that happened to have two cultural events, a wedding and something else. But the majority of the main purpose, the focus is equine service and dealing with people that travel with horses and all that. Because you have two events that are cultural events, we're trying to address it as a cultural event center. And that's not the case. In my, in my mind, I just suggest that like Mr. Montgomery, that there's opportunities for everybody, and it's a community. You have to work together to build it up and maintain the integrity of that community. So and evolution is going to occur. So working with one another to see what could happen. If it gets out ahead, then you have every right to come back and start over, do whatever. But it's a equine center that's needed. It's a couple of cultural events, and there was some money generated for the local economy. And you've got people that are working hard to make it happen. I, I think we can get through this thing.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a comment.
Mr. Watkins.
The, the voiding of the special use, and this is just the real estate person coming out of me. If you go to sell this property, make that a contingency in your contract that the special use is approved and continued. And it won't automatically die, but there's, you know, it'll be up before a new PZ board probably. So that's just my comment.
Goodman. Anyone else? Mr. Lindbach?
Personally, I do not want to discount the overwhelming opposition. Some of these people have lived there for a decade or two. They know the area. And a lot has changed since the, the advent of this business across the, across the way. And in my opinion, a lot of their concerns are legitimate.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Chair would like to ask Mr. Kirschman to move back up to number four. Is it four or five on the screen? Five. If we reject this special use as written tonight, what is to keep applicant from applying for periodic temporary special event permits?
As long as they comply with the regulations within our code, they absolutely could. Temporary special events are allowed. And in our code, they do not have limitations on the people. There is a section in there, and I apologize, I don't remember the full section. But if it hits a certain criteria, that the neighbors would end up having to sign off on it, on that special event.
That sounds right on.
Within three, within three hundred feet, if they have a residence within three hundred feet.
Okay. That's pretty, pretty short distance. I'm probably oversimpl.
Can I talk?
No, the public hearing is closed. This is commission discussion.
Can I ask a question?
No, ma'am. Sorry, the public hearing is closed.
All right.
So the continuation on my probably oversimplified thought is remove the event parts of all of this. It sounds to me like her neighbors and the applicant are coming closer and closer and closer the more we talk about this. Take the special events completely out, focus on equine, and I'll bet you she can get a six space additional approval for the RVs, as long as everything is focused on the equine use, as Mr. Gonzalez stated a moment ago. So that's my thinking at this time. Mr. Montgomery.
With the understanding that temporary special event permits can be obtained as needed whenever.
It sounds like they can, as long as they qualify, and the neighbors don't raise a.
We've done that quite a lot in other places. Okay.
And I, and I will just add to that, many special events don't require any public notification. You know, we have one that is hailed out in the wine country area, and we get quite a few complaints from the neighbors, but it does not reach the level that requires notification of the neighborhood. And very likely, you know, a wedding, something along those lines, that would not reach the level of having to notify neighbors.
Can please side talk? Please. I want to talk.
They only give, they only give you five minutes, and they want to take away your privacy.
I am from Venezuela, and I'm bringing my family here from Venezuela.
Ma'am, if you can hear me, you have been muted. You are interrupting the public hearing. The public comments section have come and gone. The chairman has asked numerous times if there's anybody online that wished to speak. At that time, there was nobody wishing to speak, so you have been muted.
So does anyone else have anything else that they've thought of on this commission?
I think a special applicant event is just that. It's just an application. Might not even be a D.
Sorry, are you looking for a motion to remove that contingency?
Is that what we're looking for, Mr. Curia? Yes. So would someone like to make a motion to make that modification to the motion?
That sounds like a chairman duty.
I can't do it.
I'll move to strike number five on the specials, on the conditions.
There's a motion on the floor to strike number five. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. I'm sorry, I don't know what the procedure is after we've done this.
To vote on the modification.
Can we have a discussion?
So we have a first and second on the modification. So do we have any discussion on that modification?
I have a question on
Mr. Young?
The two, yes, I have a question on the two-day event, a wedding's a one-day event. Can we modify that to say, instead of a two-day, just any event?
On the modification motion?
Yes.
So do we need to look at that item five again? Is that in?
Please.
Mr. Young, in that item five?
Please bring it up again. Because it specifically calls for, is asking about a two-day event. I want to see any event.
Yes, sir. We're proposing eliminating number five.
All together?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so any event, so a one-day event, they're gonna have to go for a special use?
It would be a temporary special event license.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's, I want a clarification. Thank you.
All right, are we ready to call for the vote on the modification? Mr. Martsky.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mr. Lindbach?
No.
Mr. Montgomery.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Modification has been moved and approved.
Ma'am, Chairman, I apologize. I didn't hear your, I didn't hear your vote.
I'm sorry. I vote aye. Now we entertain the original motion? May we see it again?
Motion has been made and seconded.
So now we are vote, voting on this. Let's calling for the vote, Mr. Martsky?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Nay.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Lindbach?
No.
And Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The ayes have it. This docket is approved as modified. And Ms. Bassett, you need to be in touch with Robert Kirschman to sort this out. I propose we take a break, very short break, eight minutes. Everybody stretch and get a drink.
I think right after is the soon.
With that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to hear or answer any questions that the commission may have. Recording on?
Chair, we are recording, we're ready to go.
Let's call this meeting back to order, please. We're moving into item number four. This is docket SU 22-34 called 181 Solar. A special use authorization to approve construction of a contract construction service business on Highway 181 in Pierce. Applicants are Bruce and Diana Hamburger. Are you present? Thank you. At this time, I will call for the planning director's presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The site is 10 acres in total, but only two acres for the special use. Parcel is identified as 401 8202F. Zoning is RU4, which is rural one dwelling per four acres minimum. It is in growth category D and plan designation is rural. There is no area plan. There is an existing single-family residence in poor repair. Afterwards, there will be a same, however, rehabbed or new single-family residence with approximately 3,100 square foot structure that will house a solar business. So again, it's located on Highway 181, near the curve going towards Turkey Creek. The applicant has an existing business that they've been running out of their home and it is one of the success stories we like hearing where their business has gotten too big for their home and so they need to expand to another location. And so that is what we have here. They are proposing a small building that would house the offices and some workspace inside and then a carport outside that would allow for storage of outside materials. They have proposed to screen the entire site so that they do not cause any issues with views for the neighbors. Here are some photographs of the site. It is in a very rural area, very sparsely populated. It complies with all 10 factors that we use to evaluate this request. We did receive two letters in support of the request, no letters in opposition. The project, again, for our factors in favor, complies with 10 of the 10 criteria used to evaluate. The project will provide diversity of businesses discussed in the comprehensive plan. Entrepreneurialship is essential and should be encouraged as part of an economy-based land use policy. Supporting small businesses will not only spur diversified income opportunities and ensure economic competitiveness, but will also foster resilience in the face of economic challenges. Again, we received two letters in support. We have no factors against approving this docket. With that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to hear or answer any questions that the commission may have.
I just have one quick one. Under your list of 10 factors, you say two letters in opposition. Need to correct that.
It's two letters of support.
Go back a couple slides. There.
My mistake, it is two letters in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. And now declare the public hearing opened and call for the applicant's statement. Make your name and address, please, sir. Personal address, please.
My name is Joshua Shea and my personal address is 10399 East Turkey Creek Road, Pierce, Arizona 85625. As I said, my name is Joshua Shea. I am the son-in-law of Bruce and Diana Hamburger and I'm up here today because I'm currently the owner of Lighthouse Electric and Solar. I purchased the business from Bruce and Diana and with the hopes to continue it and grow it in Cochise County and continue to develop it. And part of that is trying to get it out of their space, their personal, on their personal property. And like Robert said in his report, we've grown beyond the facilities that we're in. So we're looking to expand and trying to get out of their area a little bit and which would allow us to expand. As a small business operating in someone's backyard, it's, there's a lot of trust that needs to be involved in that with every employee, which we always hope to have trust with every employee, but it's really kind of hampers how much we can grow the business with how much we're operating in and out of their own yard. And then we're currently more on a residential road than right on the highway. And so trying to keep down disturbing our neighbors on the current property as well. So this move will really help benefit that and cut down on those issues. And so we'd like to ask for you guys' consideration to allow us to build a building there, 181, and allow us to move our small business over there and be able to continue to grow and expand and serve Cochise County and their residents in electrical and solar needs.
Thank you. Now is the time for comments from other persons. I don't have any speaker requests. Is there anyone online? Hearing done, is there anyone in the room that wants to speak on this issue? Hearing done, I'm assuming that you will waive your right to rebut. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. It's time for commission discussion for any questions of the applicant or the staff.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
For the applicant, I'm sorry. I cannot find it anywhere, but I'm pretty confident that I noticed somewhere in the application the use of an 18-wheel trailer when it was under the daily use vehicles.
It's not underneath the daily use vehicle. We receive deliveries when we, in the, you know, operation of our business, when we order in material, a lot of the deliveries come in on 18-wheel trucks. And so we just put in setbacks to make it easier for an 18-wheeler to access. Right now, they call us and say, you're down a dirt road. Can we make it? So right now, this should make it a lot easier for them and the spacing is very much designed so an 18-wheeler can turn around.
No, that answers.
We're not operating 18-wheelers.
Thank you.
Press it.
Anything else? Mr. Young?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We now call for the planning director's summary and the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a recommendation for approval. There are no conditions outside of our standard conditions for this docket and there's a sample motion on the screen.
Call for the most.
Can I talk?
We are in the middle of a public hearing. Public comment section has expired.
Sorry, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins?
I moved to approve docket SU 22-34 with the conditions of approval recommended by staff, the factors of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Second? Mr. Limbach, seconds. Any discussion of this motion? Hearing done, roll call, vote. Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It is unanimous? Your docket is approved and I thank you for being patient with us tonight. We're moving to docket SU 23-01, Omphalos Wine Tasting. An applicant initiated special use authorization request to lawfully establish an off-site winery tasting room and agricultural processing with less than 300-foot minimum setback. The address is 6107 East Cattle Drive in Wilcox. Applicant is Thomas Messier. Are you in the room? Good evening, sir. Call for the planning director's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. This is a special use authorization request docket SU 2301. The request is for off-site wine tasting and agricultural processing. The subject parcel is APN 30555024B, 6107 East Cattle Drive in unincorporated Wilcox. Currently, the subject parcel has a 480-square-foot building, which is proposed to be converted into space for wine making, which is agricultural processing, and an off-site wine tasting room. The applicant is Mr. Tom Messier, who is with us tonight. This is the concept plan. On the left is what was submitted by the applicant. On the right, I roughly superimposed the plan onto the site. This is a 20-acre site. On the plan, you can see the building, which is proposed to be converted into space for wine making and a wine tasting room. The reason we consider this off-site is because this is currently an undeveloped parcel, as you can see from the aerial. The applicant intends to plant grapevines on the property. In the near term, the applicant intends on purchasing locally grown grapes for wine production until the vines are established. Wine processing will occur on this site as well as a separate facility that is not part of this application. There's a 236-foot setback from the location of the processing to the nearest property line on the eastern portion of the site. This is 64 feet short of the 300 feet that is required for byright processing. Specifically, the applicant proposes a 144-foot, square-foot crush pad, 408 square feet of storage area, and 2,304 square feet of outside area, which will include both ground level and deck seating for customers. The applicant will serve wine and limited food options. The applicant was approved for a type-one food establishment license in November. Here are some photos of the site, mostly taken from Cattle Drive looking south, with the exception of the bottom right, which shows the current condition of Cattle Drive. There are some other wineries in the immediate area I'll mention, and this is within the Wilcox wine area. The zoning is RU10. In terms of permitted uses, nearly all development standards, with the exception of minimum lot size, it's the same as RU4. The land use is derule. The proposal is compliant with the spirit and intent of the current land use and zoning. There is no area plan in place and it is outside the Douglas Active Management area. There are 10 factors we use to evaluate all special use proposals. In this case, nine of the factors apply. We just discussed the first two factors. It is also in compliance with traffic circulation, services and infrastructure, water conservation, hazardous materials and public input. We received two letters in support, no letters in opposition. Development along major street factors does not apply. The site has an existing easement on Cattle Drive, which is a local dirt county-maintained road. I will also mention in terms of site development standards, the applicant has requested two waivers with staff advice. The first is a 50% reduction in required parking, which would equate to about 26 required spaces instead of 51, and a waiver of the two-inch-thick gravel surface for the driveway and parking area requirement. Staff supports these waivers because it's similar to standard of existing development in the area and this development is, if approved, would not seem out of place or overparked. We also recommend one condition. Wineries can attract special events such as weddings and concerts. We recommend conditioning a reasonable man commercial noise standard. In terms of factors in favor of the request, it's consistent with the goals and policies of the comp plan and the purpose of the zoning district. Fully complies with seven of the criteria used to evaluate special use requests. Properties within Wilcox wine country and the wine industry is important to Cochise County. This business is locally owned and would provide food and recreation and we received two letters of support from neighbors. No factors against approval were identified. I will now pause for the applicant's presentation and discussion from the commission. As I previously mentioned, Mr. Messier is in attendance.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Messier, would you please make your statement?
My name's Tom Messier. My address is 250 East Hillside Street in Mesa, 85201. My wife, Teresa, and I are the proprietors of Omphalos Winery. The origins of Omphalos Winery comes from a Greek legend of Zeus sending two eagles flying in opposite directions at the same speed to find the center of the world. At that point, they laid an omphalo stone with modern GPS and some creative marketing. We have determined that the center of the world is actually property of 6107 East Cattle Drive. And I said, you know, you're so close to the center of the world, didn't you? So we are starting a winery and a vineyard to utilize the ideal growing area that it provides. You want to produce quality wines and add to the local economy. We believe Omphalos Winery is a good fit for the area and will blend in well with the neighboring vineyards. Should do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there comments from other persons, either online or in the room?
I am here.
Ma'am, is it on the, on this docket or is it just on a previous docket?
I need to know what is going on in...
I need to know what is going on in my place.
I'm sorry, I did not understand that.
I wanted to know what the people realistic about what is going on with our children in the school that is coming with, you know, is not normal with transvestarian, transgender. I don't want that in my school.
Ma'am, this is a planning and zoning commission meeting for Cochise County. We have specific items on the docket. Something of that probably would be more appropriate at the beginning of the meeting, when we have our public comment sections or with the appropriate school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Messier, do you have anything else to say? Thank you so much. The public hearing is closed. Commissioners, discussion time is now open. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Mr. Young, are you still with us?
I am here, no questions.
Thank you. Let's call for the planning director's summary, please, and recommendation.
Staff recommends conditional approval. If the commission wishes to grant approval, staff recommends the following conditions. The first condition relates to noise. Number one, it's unlawful for any person to make, allow, enable, or create unreasonable noise with the intent to disturb peace or quiet of a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities with the knowledge of doing so. And reasonable noise means a reasonable person of normal sensibility would find excessive when heard at the property line of adjacent residential. In addition, all standard conditions related to acceptance of conditions permitting timeframes and modifications apply and have not been modified by this request. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any additional questions, and there is a sample motion on the slide for the commission's consideration at this time.
Call for the question, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins.
I move to approve docket SU 23-01 with the conditions of approval recommended by staff, the factors of approval constituting findings of fact.
Second, Mr. Martzky, thank you. Are there any further questions from the commission? Hearing done. Let's move to a roll call vote. Mr. Martzky?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
And Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. Go forth and grape. Final docket this evening is number SU 23-02, Serata Guest Lodging. An applicant initiated special-use authorization request to lawfully establish guest lodging on a rural-zoned parcel. Applicant is Mr. Serata. His address is 440 West Simran, north of Benson. At this time, I please, call please for the planning director's presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. This is a special-use authorization request, docket 2302. The applicant would like to legitimize guest lodging on a 10-acre parcel, APN 20867026, and a portion of adjoining 10-acre parcel, APN 20867025A in unincorporated Benson. The addresses are 440 West Simran Lane and 536 West Alamo Lane. The applicant was approved for a home occupation permit to run a home-based horseback riding and commercial stable business in 2017. The parcels both have rural zoning, minimum lot size four acres. The applicant is Ronald Serata, who is with us tonight. Here is a concept plan. Two parcels are identified. Northern parcel was purchased by the applicant in 2016, the southern one in 2020. Commercial riding stables are permitted use in rural zoning on a minimum site of 10 acres. Guest lodging, which includes tent camping and rental RV spots, are special uses and subject of this docket. General location of these activities are identified on the map on the screen. We have two general classifications of uses within all zoning districts. Permitted uses in rural zoning include residential, but also things as varied as churches, vet clinics, daycare facilities, and commercial riding stables. These uses are thought to be compatible with the rural way of life, and that's why they're classified in that manner. Site plans are reviewed and approved administratively. Rural zoning has an additional 55 uses that are considered special uses, and they're often brought before this board. They're typically considered to have more off-site impacts than the permitted use categories. Public hearing is required, and we typically recommend assigning conditions to lessen any potential impacts. Guest lodging is a special use. Here are some site photos. The top two show the northern parcel. On the top left, you can see an outhouse to the right, the guest cottage in the middle, and a non-rental RV. On the top right is an area reserved for tent camping. Tents are not provided by the applicant, but he has designated space for them, as well as fire pit. On the bottom of the screen are two photos of the southern parcels. The southern parcel, there were two occupied RVs on-site when I visited. Again, the applicant does not own the RVs, but he does have on-site hookups and a septic system for use by the RVers. Zoning in this entire area is RU4. Use is consistent with five of the seven purpose statements for rural zoning districts. In particular, it meets the less common purpose of providing recreational services that are compatible with rural living. There are 10 factors we use to evaluate all special-use proposals. In this case, eight of those factors apply. It fully complies with four factors. It complies with conditions regarding three factors. The one factor of primary concern in this docket is public input. I received a lot of public comments regarding this docket, which were attached for your review. I hope you had time to look these over. There were a lot of concerns noted specifically of traffic, road safety, dust odor. There was a lot of feedback regarding the appropriateness of commercial business in general in this location. Should the commission choose to support the request, staff recommends the commission attach all conditions recommended by staff, which are intended to help address neighborhood neighbor concerns. In addition, staff recommends replacement of the approved home occupation permit, HO1710, with a commercial permit for the trail-riding business. Staff feels, based on input from surrounding residents, the business exceeds the limit of that original approval. The recommendation is not contingent on the special-use approval and can be initiated administratively by the zoning inspector following the date of this hearing. In terms of factors in favor of the request, it's consistent with the goals and policies of the comp plan and the purpose of the zoning district. It fully complies with four of the criteria used to evaluate special-use requests. Again, I'll reiterate that commercial riding stables are a permitted use in rural zoning. The guest cottage that was identified in the photos could qualify as a short-term rental, subject to state law requirements. This is an established locally-owned business that promotes tourism, and it provides recreation. In terms of factors against the approval, we did receive letters of opposition from at least five neighbors. This number could be higher. It gets difficult to quantify when there's multiple property owners and submissions. There are legitimate off-site concerns that were identified by the neighbors, and it doesn't fully comply with four of the factors used to evaluate special-use requests. And I'll now pause for the applicant's presentation and discussion from the commission. As I previously mentioned, Mr. Serata is in the attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Limbachlin. The public hearing is now open, and we do call for the applicant's statement, please.
Evening, and thank you, and welcome all our neighbors. I'm glad we're able to bring everybody out in force here. We've been around for a little over 30 years. The last six years, we've been on Cody Road, or Simran, sorry about that. We've been in Benson. Let me get to my notes. The past six years from our current location in Benson. We're blessed to be in a historic, in the historical Cochise County, a county steeped in rich Indian and cowboy history. We love sharing this history with our guests and taking our guests via horseback to a much simpler place and time. The beauty of our rugged landscape is best seen from the back of a trusted horse. You might be surprised to know that our local Cochise County history is known globally and throughout the world. We regularly have guests traveling here to experience what the real west is and to come ride our horses and learn more about our local history. We believe quite strongly that our business is a economic catalyst for Cochise County local businesses. Our guests very often stay overnight in local hotels and motels. They stay overnight in other lodging. They buy meals at our local restaurants. They buy fuel, shop at Safeway and Walmart. They buy souvenirs in Tombstone. They visit other outdoor destinations such as Carts andor Caverns. We get thanked regularly by local businesses for referring our customers to them. We also get referrals from the local Benson Visitor Center, mostly from Bob. Over the years, our businesses have received much notoriety. We're ranked currently number one for outdoor activities on several social media sites like TripAdvisor, et cetera. Our horses have been cast in several movies over the last three years, and we have some local equine celebrities on our ranch. We have almost 500 five-star reviews on TripAdvisor. We work very hard to provide a high-level guest experience. We take great pride in our horses. They're gentle and very well-cared-for. Our location is professional, neat, organized, and clean. We also believe quite strongly in treating people right, and that includes our neighbors. Unfortunately, dealing with some of our neighbors has been very difficult. You'll no doubt be hearing from some or all them very shortly, voicing opposition to our application. You'll likely be hearing objections that probably are somewhat unrelated to our application for overnight housing. You'll hear objections for manure in the roads, runoff, flies, odor, and our opinion is all that is irrelevant to the instant application. You'll also be hearing objections about traffic, and we've done some calculations, and the average traffic that we generate is one to two cars per day. Sometimes, sometimes more in the winter, but much less in the summer, and that's what it averages out to be. Over the years, we've done our very best to be sensitive to the needs of our neighbors and their feelings, and when we can, we do everything we can to comply with their requests. I received zero response to the letters I send out, and I wish I would have had a chance to talk to each and every one of you before here today, but that wasn't the case. Our business has evolved over the years to allow our guests to stay overnight. We've learned that many folks who come to ride with us would prefer, or that are staying in the area, would prefer to stay in a beautiful, quiet, secluded ranch location as opposed to a crowded motel in town. And a lot of people like to use our location as a base for operations when they're touring the area, going to places like Tombstone, Carts andor Caverns, Tubac, et cetera. Most of our guests that stay enjoy waking up to the sight of horses, enjoying their breakfast, watching the sun rise over the Ringcon Mountains, and just enjoying the peace and tranquility that exists here. We've got a very small, limited capacity for people. We're not a big business. We only have a limited amount of horses, and it's our strong feeling that if we're allowed to continue having guests overnight, it's going to actually decrease the traffic because there won't be as many people coming in for day rides. We have two type of guests that come to the ranch. Those that are here to ride and take like a 60-minute or 90-minute or two-hour ride and then depart, and those that choose to stay overnight and tour the area and enjoy some horseback riding while they're here.
I understand what you mean, but that is not what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Serata. Hang up, Mr. Kirschman, or that's not possible?
Madam Chair, she's been removed from the meeting.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to invite comments from others. First, we have Stephen Brightengross. Thank you, sir. Reiterate your name and your address, please, before you speak.
Good evening. Steve Brightengross, 450 Alamo Lane, Benson, Arizona. And I'd like to beg to differ with Mr. Mersch on the center. The center of the earth is at 450 Alamo Lane. We're here today to go over some of the issues that we're having with our neighbors, Ron.
Speak into the microphone, sir, so we can capture your comments.
Can we have the slide back that shows the properties? Okay, I'm located to this, actually would be to the south of Ron's existing property where he has the business now, and to the east of the proposed business on Cattle Drive. So I have two, there's two easements there. Cattle Drive is my easement. It's a private easement, and it is utilized for Ron's incoming and outgoing traffic. Also, the property on Alamo Lane is a private easement, also my easement. Anyway, Mr. Serata, Ron, his business has actually changed our rural area. I've lived at this residence since 1970, not the one I have now, but the other property, the one on Alamo Lane. Went to school there, went to school in Benson for 20 years, and 20 years. I went to school in Benson, sorry. I think I have issue. I went to school here in Benson, and I resided there all through school. And after I graduated from school, I joined the military, traveled the world, and after retiring, I moved back, bought this, purchased this property in 2000. And this is where we bear our retirement home. We like it. It's rural. Everybody in this community has been here for years with the neighbors, and this horse business has fundamentally changed our entire community. It has fundamentally changed it. It brought strangers into our, our community, has fundamentally changed everything about our rural environment. And it's basically, we are strangers in our own home, and people are at our doorsteps that are strangers. It's an uneasy feeling. It has completely changed the environment, and all these people that are here today are going to agree with me. It's not the same as it was. I am not against, you know, a business growing at all. I have no problems with that. I have no problem with, you know, things, businesses that expand, but not in this rural environment. It's completely wrong. Everything that's happening with the trail rides, it has a negative impact on the entire environment, the entire area. You can physically see it with the satellite if you look. Have tons of photo documentation to show the damage that's being done by these horses. I mean, if you, you put a trail of 10 horses together and ride them down the same path for seven years, what, what kind of erosion you think you're going to have from that? What kind of decay? I mean, it's, it's tearing up the vegetation. It has a negative impact on the environment, a negative impact on wildlife. It's just negative in the whole realm of things. This is how this is impacting our environment. And to introduce or expand on this business and allow RVs on my west side, it's just, it's unacceptable. Now, I can look out my front door and see a business. I can look out my side door and see a business, and I look out my back door and I see a business. And again, people in the community, they're strangers, and it makes me insecure and uncomfortable, and I'm sure it makes others that way. I mean, this is, this is my home, and to me, it is the center of everything. We retired there. We love it. Quiet, rural, residential area. We retired there. We love it. Quiet, rural residential area. I understand the county wanting to expand and grow business, but not in this area. It's not suited for a commercial business with heavy traffic. No. And a two-car average is wrong. I have documented footage.
Mr. Brightengross, your time has expired.
Okay.
We thank you for your comment.
To many levels.
Thank you, sir, for speaking.
Thank you.
Call Niles Miller, please, to speak.
My name is Niles Miller. I live at 2743 North Ocatillo Road, basically between Milepost 9 and Simon's Way. All the traffic in and out of Double R Guest Ranch runs past my house, and I am going to back Steve Brightengross up. It has increased. His application dictates that he has no trucks coming in. Well, it's curious how he gets his animals fed, considering I see that goose-neck trailer hauling tons of hay up and down the road every day. I had a couple gentlemen in here talking about the other horse issue that was on the docket today and about how the neighbors all need to get along. Well, if you put a GPS marker down in the center of Double R Ranch, you put a four-mile radius on it, you've got 80% of the residents in this room to oppose it. 80% of the neighbors are getting along. I don't know what else we could say. And Mr. Mersch can back me up on those numbers and that mileage. It's frustrating, the amount of time as a deer hunter, archery bow hunter, that I've had his dogs loose come up on me while I'm outside with my bow hunting deer during December and January. More times than I can count, it's to the point where I won't even hunt my own neighborhood in. The traffic, the blocking of the traffic, the absolute refusal and the cussing and swearing at us for traveling on a two-lane maintained road with vehicle. There's nothing neighborly about these people. I have never had any personal dealings with these guys that I'm aware of, but the cowboys, when they're out with their people, rude, just completely rude. I was raised, if you take a vehicle in front of a, if you see horses coming down the road, you stop the vehicle and you shut it off. You let them go around you on whatever manner they can because they can leave the road. Not according to them. They better, they're going to be screaming at you to get off the road. So it's just the, the the damage they've done to the community. And keep in mind, I've got no say on Alamo Lane because I live on Ocatillo. But the damage they've done to the attitude in the community by being so unfriendly, so uncooperative, telling people that they can't run their chainsaws because it's disturbing the horses, but then go and do whatever they want. It's like, as long as we've been to their will, they'll allow us to continue our sustenance. And it's frustrating, and we're all tired of it. You're going to hear this over and over again. I understand this doesn't have anything to do with new RV slots, but why would you allow that to grow? Especially when there's so many, if you look at the public input that's online, all the questions about the septics and the pest and this and that, it leaves the county audit, do an audit in this. And speaking of that, I emailed Kristy McLalahan today. Will that email become public record?
I did attach it.
Thank you. That's all I've got. Got any more questions, still free ask.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Loretta Gaglin?
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Loretta Gagline. I live at 2711 North Ocatillo. However, I do own property to the west of parcel at 536 Alamo. I own the parcel west of that. Okay, getting to the special use for overnight stays in RV parks. After hearing the previous people that spoke said they supported it at one point, however, they regretted supporting it. And that's why I hope you do not approve this special use because we don't want regrets that we're going to have to come back and and say all these things all over again. And if you do approve this, could you, your staff direct us to how to properly report things that are out of compliance with this? Because, again, we beg you not to approve this and to rescind his home occupation permit that we did not have a voice in. So again, I ask you to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Laurel Gagline?
Hi, my name is Laurel Gagline. I live at 199 West Lightning Lane. And I strongly disapprove of this special use permit for lodging in our small residential neighborhood. We live way north of Benson, about 15 miles north, in a small residential area. And all the neighbors, as you can see, as well as many people up and along Ocatillo, disapprove of this. I know Cochise County is all about economic expansion, but Benson already has multiple RV parks and hotels and motels, plenty of places that people can go. We don't need everyone and their mother coming out to our small neighborhood. Most of us have been out there since the 60s, 70s, and 80s. We didn't move out there for this. His business unfortunately has completely ruined the peace, peacefulness and tranquility of our neighborhood to the point that it's having a negative impact on our lives daily. Neighbors have stopped their daily walks for health reasons, biking and running because of the traffic. His horse-riding business in itself brings so much traffic to our neighborhood. And if you approve of all of this rental for lodging, it's only going to increase it more, unfortunately. He has already been renting all these spaces for a couple of years illegally. And unfortunately, as all my neighbors, as myself, can attest to, he's falsified his application, and it is not just one to two cars per day. We have cameras up and we watch and we pay attention to what happens. And on one of our cameras, we have 56 cars in one day. That's not one to two cars. And that may have been a couple of the local residents, but that's not all of us. There's only four lived-in residences in our small neighborhood. That's not all our traffic. His traffic unfortunately is causing lots of dust and impeding the roadway. We live on a single-lane, single-lane dirt track road. It's not equipped for all this traffic coming and going. We have multiple blind hills, and this causes a safety issue. There has been head-on collisions in the past. And all these people coming from all over the country and all over out to our neighborhood, this causes a safety issue for the residents. In addition to this, he's already in violation of his home occupation permit on several accounts, and that Christine did give that to you guys in our reports. Not only the traffic that our small neighborhood cannot handle, but also the dust, the horse manure that piling up and flows onto our yards and to our road. And they very rarely pick it up in the road. The noise, constant noise of people coming and going. Food and beverages and merchandise. They're providing food and selling merchandise to people. He has increased signage that's off-site, that is not approved and not on his property. And an increased number of employees over two employees. And there is a picture from his website with four employees that we have all seen them riding and leading the trail rides. And unfortunately, on his application, he states for the cabin for RVs. But unfortunately, he is renting out the main house. He has occasionally at 440 West Semeron because we have people that we know that have rented it out. And there is a house that sits west of the RV spaces that he occasionally rents out as well because cars come and go. We also have a great concern for septic because under the Cochise County website, there is no permitted docks for the septic for his cabin. For the RVs at 440 West Semeron that people do live in, where are the septics for these? He also just recently built a structure at 440 West Semeron. Where is the septic for this? You know, it's a single-lane dirt road. The traffic that his horse-riding business in and of itself is bringing to our neighborhood is extreme, and we can't handle it. And no amount of road maintenance or horse manure pickup is really going to help to negate the negative factors that his business is having on our lives on a daily, daily aspect. So we really ask you guys to please disapprove his special use for RVs and lodging. And all the neighbors will agree.
Thank you. Nathan Straight?
My name is Nathan Straight. I live at 199 West Lightning Lane. I'd like to agree with what everybody has said. The amount of traffic on our road, Mr. Serota stating that one to two vehicles a day, that is laughable. I pass one to two vehicles of his employees every morning on my way to work. The amount of cars coming over these blind hills. I mean, how could you run a successful horse-riding business with one to two vehicles a day? What would you get, six, eight riders? That's, you're not going to make a living like that. We're talking 30, 40, 50 riders a day. That's a lot of vehicles. That's a lot of vehicles. One to two? I don't think so. I strongly urge you to disapprove this special use permit. Could you take the slide back to where you overlaid his right there? The red square is an existing shed that they rent out. Over to the right, they have built a new structure that looks to be about 400 square feet. That is not shown on there. This parcel is not, they rent out a house there. The RVs they're living in right there have been there since November. It's a 15-day limit in our zoning. When we complained, it should have been enforced. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. And then if you do approve this, what recourse do we have? What do we have after that? And I just urge you not to approve this. This is already ruining our lives. We can't ride bikes. We can't walk our dogs. It's ridiculous. We don't need more cars down there. These people come in with their RVs. They have side-by-sides. They're rolling around everywhere. It's not in our little neighborhood. He could do it somewhere else. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Straight. Neil and Kelly Berger, are you both speaking, or can you get one of you to speak?
My name is Kelly Berger. I'm not really sure of the address, 440 Semeron Lane. I'm one of the campers. I have been there since November. I go over to the ranch. The horses, you know, they're part of my soul. That's where I need to be. So I help out a lot there with that. We don't have 40 or 50 riders every day. There's maybe 10 max because of the horses. The dogs stay on their property. I'm trying to address, they'll fall down the road.
Please.
I've had other neighbors' dogs over at the camper that are very skittish. So, you know, a scared dog will always bite, so we try and make noise so he runs away. And we do have a side-by-side, so I can see where, you know, the tires itself do make a lot of dust. But as far as noise and stuff, I don't, I guess I don't really see the problem. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Berger. Mary Brightengross?
Hi, my name's Mary Brightengross. I live at 450 Alamo Lane, Benson, Arizona. Mine's going to be short and sweet. I've only been there 20 years, so I've been there forever. My issue is with the easement encroaching. He has been asked before to actually stay off our easements, but he instead just moved it up a couple yards, a couple hundred yards maybe, and went down further and just gets right along our fence line. And he's got his trail going all along our fence lines to where our fences are going to wash out. And we've asked him to backfill, and he says he will, and he doesn't. He says he'll get to it, and he doesn't. My husband goes and fills it, and they just run right back over it. They haven't filled it once. They may have thrown a couple shovels here and there, but they never did it. So I don't know how to get him to stop that. He's gone through part of his property. He needs to just go through all of his property. He's got trails going everywhere, everywhere, in the whole valley, basically, not just in our area. So that's really what I got to say. Besides the traffic, and it's high-speed traffic a lot of times. He needs to quit that. Somehow, I don't know how he can do it all the way from the beginning of Ocatilla where it hits the dirt. They're moving. They're moving all the way, seven and a half, seven miles, all the way out that dirt. They're moving. So that just needs to quit. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. It is now time for Mr. Serota's rebuttal.
Madam Chair, we should check, see if there's anybody online first. Is there anybody online that wishes to speak on this item?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Sir, could you state your name and address?
This is Jonathan Wall, 2500 North Ocatillo Road. We've had extreme problems with, we tried to walk down the road and specifically people who work for him and a black Dodge Ram. We got the license plate number. I've sent it to you already. And they've ran us off the road. They're going to kill somebody. It's that serious. They're going so fast, they're sliding off the road. We tell them to slow down with hand signals, and they flip us off. They're riding on state property. The horses are, anywhere we go, if we go down on that lane, they tell us, I put the car in park and I stop, and they come up to the car with the horse, they say, shut the fucking thing off. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but they're insane. They're just rude. They're obnoxious. They're using state property, and if we can use the state property they are to make money on it, let me know how. Because they're making money on our state property. I just want to know how I can do that too for free. So they think they're above the law. They're just crazy people is what I would say about them. And that's, I've been walking that road for years, and every time, me and my wife almost got hit. They're in danger and other people. I mean, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. He, he's full of shit. Okay? That's all I'm saying.
Does that conclude your remarks, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that wishes to speak? Hearing none, we return to the applicant, please. Five minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'll work backwards from um, I, the gentleman who was just um on the Zoom call. Um, we do have a Arizona State Land Trust permit for a very large amount of acreage to allow us to ride. We ride legally. We paid a lot of money. We pay a lot of money every year for that privilege and we do take care of the land. Uh, regarding the black truck, I totally agree with you. The guy, uh, he has been helping us. And I've had some calls from people who say he drives fast. I've spoken with him. I told him to please slow down. I don't need the, the issues. I don't need the heartache. I don't need the problems. And I can't control the way he drives, but his, his uh tenure with us is over. I wish we had fifty or sixty or forty or fifty, whatever you said, riders per day. We just don't have that many horses. We do a, if you go online and look at our schedule, uh, this time of year, we offer a nine-thirty ride and a one-thirty ride. And sometimes a sunset ride if it's not too cold and dark. That's it. Um, we're not getting rich and, but we enjoy meeting all the people. We enjoy sharing our way of life with people. And that's what we have. Our average ride size is probably four to six people and, and I take great deference and great offense. Uh, the guys that we have working for us, uh, one of them, he's a volunteer. Well, he isn't, he's a volunteer. His name's Gary. He's been with us for probably ten or eleven years. Um, and he's just a polite, meek, mild guy. Our second guy is Pancho. Um, he's a tall Mexican-looking guy. He's a really great guy. Um, and he comes and helps us out four days a week. And I ju, I can't imagine him saying boo to anybody. Uh, we have had some issues and we've had some very close calls out there with people who are very rude and don't follow the, the law regarding the vehicular law that gives horses to ride away. We've had some very close calls with four-wheelers and ATV-ers and sand rails out there. Just come flying down the road at fifty, sixty miles per hour and we're out there, we're only on Ocatillo Road probably for about a half mile before we make a left turn and get out onto our permitted land. Um, we don't enjoy riding on Ocatillo Road, but it's the only way to get to in that, in that direction, our state permit. Um, trying to think what the other objections were. Oh, the one gentleman, uh, you sir right there, the green shirt. Um, I go for hay twice, twice a month. In fact, I'm going tomorrow. That's the only time I pull hay down the road. The other people you see pulling hay trailers down the road are the ranchers that are further out, five miles out and fifteen miles out. We go twice a month. That's it. I buy two squeezes of hay. That's the only time I pull a trailer. So I take great deference to your statement. I respect where you're coming from. And um, I think that's, am I missing anything? Oh, yes. Oh, easements has been the, the, thank you. Okay, yes. Um, the majority of people who come to see us and come to ride, it's just again, those usually two rides a day. Uh, it's one to two cars, maybe per ride, maybe it's more than one or two average per day, but it's, it's not fifty-six a day. I don't know where the hell you're getting that information from, but I'd be surprised if fifty-six cars go through the road in three days. Cameras or not.
Mr. Serrata?
Yes.
Let's talk to us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, we maintain the road. I don't ask anybody to contribute when the, when there was a washout, I think two summers ago, about a hundred yards from Ocatillo. Um, the road washed out. It was totally impassable. Uh, I hired a tractor guy to come in and fix the road. It's still in perfect shape today. And last year I had a grader come in and grade the whole road. And um, Steve was the only one that called and thanked me and offered to contribute, but I told him because we probably have a greater proportionate share of traffic on the road. I did, I appreciated his offer, but we'll take care of it and we'll continue to take care of the road. Um, as far as easements, thank you, Lisa. Um, we have easements that are provided by deed. I've had attorneys correspond with some of our neighbors who have blocked our easement access. I'd be happy to share our deed. I'd be happy to share copies of the letters from the attorneys, uh, telling us exactly where to go. And we're only riding on our easement. We're not riding anywhere and we have filled in the ruts you talked about. So, and we stopped riding, Steve, where he asked me to stop riding. Now we stay mostly on our property. We're probably on um, the private road about a hundred or two hundred yards outside of our front gate. And I think um, I took you where we turn in and we try to stay on, on our property as much as possible. Then we cross Alamo and we stay off the road until we're out on Ocatillo. Well, it's our easement too. So that's it.
Thank you, sir. With that, the public hearing is now closed and it is the time for the commission to ask questions of applicant or staff.
I do have
Mr. Montgomery, you go first. I don't think so, sir. Is that appropriate to talk to the guests?
The opponents.
Mr. Gray, if you could speak into the microphone, uh, push the button so we can hear you, please.
I'll speak to the applicant.
Dear lady, how do you want to handle this?
The public, the public portion is closed, so we will not be addressing the, the audience. And the audience is now to listen
Okay.
to our discussion. So you may ask staff or the applicant.
Staff or the applicant? I will ask the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, sir.
Mr. Serrata, would you like to come back? We'll probably bounce you, bounce you around a little bit right now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, a number of photographs here in this package and um, they are of the trail being used like roads. Uh, my question for that is what happens when a vehicle approaches while this is going on?
Can I see what you're looking at, please?
Sure.
So I can answer accurately.
It's a road full of horses.
Yeah.
He's got.
There are others.
Uh, this picture up here is a, a group of riders departing, going out our front gate. Um, out, I guess it's Cimarron Lane and about a hundred feet later, they're gonna make a right turn on our property and stay on our property until, well, what happens if there's a car coming? Usually all the riders just try and pull off to the side. It rarely happens, but when it does, we just, he'll try to yield to the car. Then most people are quite polite and they'll just stop and let us go by. Mm-hmm. It's almost never an issue.
Well, that's what I'm looking for. Is there um, some kind of traffic conflict when, when they encounter, when there's a vehicle and the horses?
Only what I related to, usually if it happens, it's out on Ocatillo Road and it's someone who's just barreling through. Um, at my request, the town about a year ago put uh, slow horse crossing signs up about a half mile from Alamo on the south side and half a mile beyond Alamo on the right side. So there's caution signs saying horses, horse crossing ahead and they're supposed to slow down. Some people don't. Um, and, but usually, well, if we go out and just ask them to slow down, and most people are quite polite and they just slow down. And either we let them pass or they let us pass and it's almost never an issue.
Okay, so you're offering then that when that situation does occur, there's no trouble with it. There's no conflict.
Nope. We've had a couple of altercations over the years, but mostly um, just people who just don't stop and have almost hit horses. And, but that rarely happens and it's usually with the ATV-ers. We had one dirt biker coming down um, um, from north to south and he had me going fifty, sixty miles an hour and the horses were there and he didn't wanna stop. And finally he stopped and he started skidding sideways and that scared it some horse. But um, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, no issue. Everybody's usually quite respectful. Don't wanna want to see anybody get hurt and we're always quite respectful as well.
Okay, now another issue listed on the uh, of the comment is unleashed dogs. Here's a picture of an unleashed dog. Um, and I, and you mentioned that dogs go with you on the trail.
Yes.
Other people have said that they uh, dogs get in their property, uh, perhaps chase them, interfere with their own animals and such. Is that the case?
No. Our dogs, we, we usually take uh, one or two dogs with us. They love to go. We love having them. Sometimes they serve a very important purpose. One of them's really, really good at spotting rattlesnakes ahead. Um, that's the one that was bit, Steve, that when she was ten months old, she's got very high sensitivity to snakes and she's very good at her job. But they like to go on the rides. They stay with us. They don't wander off. Um,
Okay.
And almost one hundred percent of the time, we're either on our property, on our easement or on state land, state trust land.
So you, you do suggest that they don't wander off or, or get in any trouble off the trail?
Yes.
Yeah. Madam Chairman, I think that is my questions for now.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Anyone else? Mr. Limbach?
Uh, yes, can you describe your septic system layout for us?
We have several. Um, we have one for the house where we live. We have one. Um, the RV slots in question, I believe there's three full-size slots. Uh, they're permitted. They were there when we bought the place. And there's a brand-new septic that was installed before we bought the place, uh, just for the septics. And um, there's also another septic tank for this little guest cottage that was there when we bought the place. So there's three on the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's stay out of this. This is within a couple of miles of my house.
Thank you, Mr. Markowski. Mr. Gonzalez, anything?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Serrata, is there anything that you're doing that would be out of compliance with any of the laws?
I'm here to be in compliance. I was not aware that, that little guest cottage, I thought it fell under um, R4. I think I told Christine that I thought it was called, I thought that fell under the category of an accessory dwelling and I thought it was okay. I'm grateful for whoever filed the complaint because it brought me here. I quickly submitted my application and I, I'm, I'm here to be compliant, not to be out of compliance.
Mr. Watkins?
One more question, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. Um, I might have heard somewhere today that you have other properties to do this with also? Or just the, just right here?
This one's here.
That's what you got?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Limbach?
I know, I'm finished.
Mr. Young?
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I think we're finished asking your questions. Chair has one for staff. Um, is there a limit to the number of horses livestock that you can have with that permit by right?
Within zoning, we do not limit livestock, either commercially or non-commercially.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's the end of discussion. We call for the planning director's summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you. At the top of the slide, I mentioned the administrative replacement of the home occupation permit with commercial permitting, which we have uh, discussed. Staff recommends conditional approval of the guest lodging. If the commission wishes to grant approval, staff recommends the following conditions. The first three are standard conditions that apply to all special use requests regarding waiver forms, permitting timeframes, running responsibilities, and modifications. Condition four, uh, the applicant will be required to enter into a private maintenance agreement to participate in the maintenance of the non-maintained roadway. Timely removal of the horse manure is attached. Condition five limits guest lodging to four rental RV sites, two tent camping sites, and one guest cottage, essentially legitimizing rather than enlarging what is present. Condition six, the designated guest lodging other than the guest cottage shall not be used or occupied for permanent residential living purposes. Seasonal use is permitted for up to six months of calendar year by the same applicant. Um, spots are intended for recreational seasonal use for snowbirds. The hookups are permanent, but the septic tank, uh, when installed was sized for seasonal, not full-time use. Condition seven, the property owner shall follow best management practices for odor and pest control at all times. Horse manures shall not be allowed to accumulate onsite to create nuisance odors and flies. The property owner shall retain the services of a licensed pest control service if they are unable to control flies. And condition eight, all onsite riding activities shall be adequately maintained to prevent the creation of nuisance dust, uh, during training, riding activities. Periodic watering of these areas is required as necessary to control dust. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for additional questions and there is a sample motion on the slide for the commission's consideration.
Call for the motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Gonzalez?
I move to approve the docket SU 2302, Serrata Guest Lodging to the conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors of approval, as to the findings.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Limbach, thank you. This is the time for final questions from the commission. Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Markowski, are you abstaining? Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Young?
Hi.
Mr. Watkins?
Hey.
Mr. Limbach?
No.
Mr. Montgomery?
No.
And the chair votes no. This motion fails. Thank you for your attendance.
Good.
We call for the planning director's report, please. T. Absen, are you filling in?
Uh, yeah, I will. Give me just a moment. Uh, we do have another very busy calendar um, next month. Uh, I believe we are at six items. We do have rezonings as well as um, special uses on there. And of course, I can't find the, uh, here we go. Thank you. Uh, we do have a rezoning in St. David going from R18 to our, uh, or to general business. Um, that is to, excuse me, we still have an active meeting. Uh, can I have you discontinue your conversations, take them outside? You're still having a meeting? Can you please step outside if you're gonna have conversations?
Good night.
So at the March, uh, at the March eighth meeting, another busy meeting, we will have a contract construction uh, business in Benson. We will have a downzoning out in um, the Sun sights area, catty-corner to the one that you saw last month. Uh, we have a campground proposed um, out in the uh, Alfreda area. Um, a manufacturing business, approximately five thousand square foot up in the Richland Ranchettes area. A small engine repair uh, business and I believe that's the Hurford area, Christine. Um, and then again, we've got the rezoning in St. David from R18 to general business to facilitate the construction of four, uh, fourplexes. Um, and then we do have um, a rezoning already on the docket for April. Um, but hopefully April will be a little bit calmer than the last two months. Uh, that concludes my uh, comments. You guys have anything else? Susan or Christine?
Thank you. Is there anything from the commission? Should I make it last longer?
We need to adjourn.
We are adjourned.